Okay, we're now recording.
Great. Good evening all. Welcome to the March 2nd Design Review Commission meeting. I'm Dave Blockus, the Chair of the Commission. And why don't we go ahead and establish a quorum at this point? Commissioner Ma?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kirik?
Here.
Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
And Commissioner Harding? Who I know is probably not here. So we have four, which is a quorum with Commissioner Harding not present. We'll go ahead and move on to public comments. Items not on the agenda, so if anyone out there in the public has some comments that aren't specifically in our agenda, this would be your time to speak.
So if you do have a comment, you can either use a hand gesture at this time or any sort of gesture. Or if you can't find that, just unmute yourself and identify yourself and then we can allow you some time to speak. So now would be the time.
Looks like I don't see anything.
Yeah, I don't see anybody and I don't hear.
Okay. And we'll go to the consent calendar. Looks like the Design Review Commission meetings are being minutes are continued until March 16th. So we'll go right into item number two, the property located at 959 Altos Oaks Drive, SC 21-0023. And staff, if you can present your report.
Yes, give me one second here. And I'll get my screen going. I have a presentation. But I then saw a copy of the applicant's presentation and there's a lot of similarities. So I'm probably just gonna show you, go over a couple things. I'm Steve Golden and Trump Planning Services Manager. So this is 959 Altos Oaks Drive. It's now moving forward. Hold on one sec. And can you see my screen?
Yes.
On the Google map. Okay, so the subject property is located on the north side of Altos Oaks Drive, west of Miramonte Avenue. And this neighborhood is best defined as a consistent character neighborhood according to the city's residential design guidelines. We talked about this neighborhood at the last meeting. Sorry, the slides are a lot out of order here. Sorry, not the last meeting, but the February 2nd meeting. And at that meeting, I'll just show you that this was the project that was before you. You deliberated over this project and you considered public comment. And then at that time, you directed this as a continued item with direction. And you identified four things to the applicant to improve. The first being to reduce the first and second story plate heights, a minimum of six inches. Provide a streetscape view showing relationship with the adjacent residences with accurate plate heights. You wanted more detailed views from the neighbor's patio. Looking back to the proposed residence and then from the proposed residence, second story windows back to the neighbor's house to the rear. And then you asked for some further development of the landscape plan. Making sure that they show the mature plant heights on the plans. So again, the applicant has a very detailed presentation identifying all the things that they did. I did as well, but I'm gonna kind of defer to them, actually. I will show you one quick slide, which I don't think they had a direct comparison on their slides. But on the left-hand side of this slide is what you saw February 2nd. And on the right-hand side is what you saw on, or what is proposed to you tonight. The top elevation is the front elevation and the bottom elevation or the bottom two elevations is the left-hand side elevation. Or sorry, the right. And so you can see kind of here that both the second story and the first story were reduced six inches with the, with regards to the wall plate heights. The overall reduction is a foot from the building height. And I just wanted to provide this slide as a comparison to what was before you on February 2nd. I'm gonna go all the way to the end of my slide deck. We can and just tell you that we are recommending the Design Review Commission approve this application subject to the findings and conditions contained in the gender report. I think what would be best now is if the applicant just provides their presentation and then if you have questions, either staff or the applicant can respond then. And that's my recommendation. I can answer any questions you have, but again, I would just recommend that the applicant do their presentation.
Let me ask just real quickly. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Steve?
Well, I do. Sure.
Okay.
Steve, can you put that March 2nd, February slide back up?
Sorry, it's loading.
One more.
There you go.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's, there's a little delay and when I click the mouse.
There you go.
Okay.
So.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Are those slides mislabeled? Because the daylight plane on the February 2nd slide and the March 2nd slide, I would expect, given the buildings lowered, it would be February 2nd. And if, if the building was truly lowered, why wouldn't the daylight plane relationship?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. You are correct. They, I mislabeled. It should be swapped. So the one on the left-hand side, obviously it's a lower, the lower height. And the one on the right-hand side is the higher one. So I apologize for that.
Well, following along those lines, I look at the right side and both of those slides. And I see no change in the relationship of the roof to the daylight plane. And assuming the floor levels or plate heights were reduced to foot, I would expect those to have a gap, much like it is on the left side of the February 2nd labeled slide.
Yeah, I would defer to the, to the architect of why that's occurring. Because you can see on the left-hand side, there's, on the, on the left-hand side of that elevation, there's much more room to the daylight plan than the right-hand side. So I don't know if there was some, they realigned. Realigned it a little bit, but I would defer to the architect of why that, why that appearance looks that way.
Okay. Anyone, any other commissioner have any comments? Or questions for Steve?
No, I don't have any question. I don't have any questions either.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and go to the applicant?
Hello, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
So my name is Isabel Gualamo and I'm going to be going over the proposed residence at 959 Altos Oaks Drive. Since we did discuss this project at the last DRC hearing, I'm going to focus this presentation more on the specific DRC comments we received and how we address those rather than doing a general overview of the proposed residence. So one of the comments we received was to reduce the first and second story plate height six inches. So we did reduce both the first and second story plate heights six inches for an overall reduction in height of about one foot. To comment on what you were talking about at the right side at the daylight plane, we were previously showing that portion, the two bathrooms on that portion at six inches lower than the rest of the second story. So when we lowered the second story plate height from six inches from nine to eight foot six, we didn't lower that volume because it was already at eight foot six. So here you can see at the top image what we were previously presenting at the last DRC hearing. And then in the middle image, we've taken the previously proposed residence and we've overlaid it and ghosted it in red over the updated residence so that you can really see the reduction in height and massing that we are proposing. And then finally, on the bottom image, you can see the updated design with the overall one foot height difference. And here are some other images from the different views where you can see the overall decrease in massing. Another one of the comments was to provide a streetscape view showing the relationship with the adjacent residences. So we went ahead and modeled both of the neighboring residences as well as the rear neighbor. And here you can see a streetscape view looking at the front of the residence as well as looking at the relationship with the rear neighbor. We are now proposing nine foot six plate heights throughout the first floor and eight foot six throughout the second floor. This results in an overall proposed building height of 23 feet, which is four feet less than the max. Another one of the comments was to provide more detailed views from the neighbor's patio to the proposed residence and from the rear-facing second story windows to the rear neighbor. So we went out to the site and we took some photographs from the rear neighbor's patio looking towards the proposed residence. And we also took some drone photos from the proposed second story rear-facing windows looking towards the rear neighbor. Additionally, we modeled the proposed landscape privacy screening and the rear neighbor as well as the rear fence in 3D in order to better evaluate the efficacy of this screening. So here are the images that we took from the rear neighbor's patio looking towards the existing home here. And as you can see with the existing fence as well as in landscaping, you can't really see much of the existing home and there's only the center portion of the property here. We can really see through towards the proposed residence. And this is the area where we are proposing a good amount of privacy screening. Here are the drone photos that we took from the proposed second story rear-facing windows looking towards the rear neighbor. It should be noted that we took these photos from the header height of the windows in order to illustrate the most extreme situation. In reality, eye level would be about two and a half feet less than what we're showing here. These photos were taken at around 1:30 PM on February 7th. And then here you can see the updated rear-facing windows. And we've called out the sill and header heights, which have been decreased and adjusted based on the lowered plate heights. We've also labeled these windows one through three, which you will see on the corresponding slides, the views from within the home looking out of these windows. So here is the view looking out of window one, which is the master bathroom. And as you can see with the proposed landscape screening, all you can really see out of this window is the privacy screening and you can't see any of the rear neighbor. And then here is the view out of the master bedroom, window number two. And again, as you can see, most of the view is obscured by the privacy screening. You can see a little bit of the rear fence, which we've called out, as well as the proposed patio overhang. And then here is the view from the bay window, window number three. And again, you can see mostly the privacy screening as well as some of the patio overhang. And then here is a view of the rear neighbor and we've labeled some of the windows and doors on this residence from which we've modeled and taken views from within the house looking towards the proposed residence with the privacy screening modeled. So here you can see from number one, looking out, most of what you see is the fence and the privacy screening and then a little portion of the upper portion of the first floor of the proposed residence. Here is from number two. And again, you can't really see any of the residents at all. You see mostly the proposed landscape screening as well as the rear fence. And then from window number three, again, you can see mostly landscape screening and the rear fence, but none of the second story massing. And then here are some views that we took from the rear neighbor's patio looking towards the proposed residence so that you can see from the outside as well, that mostly what you see is the landscape screening and not the house itself. Another one of the comments was to further develop the landscape plan details and provide mature plant heights on the plans. So we studied the landscaping both in 3D and with the photographs and drone studies we took. And we updated the landscaping plan and have provided the mature heights as well as the install heights on the plans. So here is the updated landscaping plan with the updated screening. And we've called out the mature heights here. As you can see, they range from about six to 15 feet at mature height for the lower shrubs, all the way up to 20 to 30 feet for the taller shrubs and trees. Given that the proposed residence has a max height of 23 feet, we think this is more than adequate in order to provide privacy between the two residences. And then here again is the updated landscape plan. And then in order to better illustrate the views from the rear yard, I'm going to fly you through the 3D model a little bit. So here you can see, this is the rear yard at about eye level. And here is the proposed landscape screening that we've modeled in. And here is the rear neighbor here and the proposed residence here. So as you can see, looking around, most of what you see is either the proposed landscape screening or the rear fence itself. And the rear neighbor is pretty obscured. So to summarize, we feel that we have addressed all of the DRC's provided comments. And we feel that our proposed residence fits in well with the neighborhood and respects the neighbor's privacy as best as possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does your client wish to say anything at this point? If they're on?
It looks like they're on. We'll see if they want to say anything. We are good.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. What's about commissioners? Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I have the same question. I still don't understand that if we took six inches out of the first floor plate height, would not the relationship between the eve on the second floor drop six inches? Even though the second floor plate height in that area was already eight foot six? Or did I miss something in the explanation?
I believe that has to do with the way the drawing is shown. We are a little further away from the daylight plane. That roof was adjusted and it was modeled differently because we were previously proposing it lower than the rest of the roof forms. We did have to adjust the overall roof design on that side of the house and the overall roof slopes. And that may have changed it a bit incrementally towards the daylight plane. But it is still lower than previously proposed at that side.
Well, once again, I'm looking at a drawing and the eve did, was there a floor plan change or? Because if I'm lowering something six inches on the first floor, I would expect that relationship between the eve and the daylight plane to change six inches. I, I don't get what you're saying.
Wouldn't it be 12 inches?
Well, she's saying the second story in that area was already eight foot six. So I can buy that aspect of it, but I don't understand the first floor was dropped.
What was our request? No, but what was our request? It wasn't to set it at eight foot six. It was to drop it six inches. No, so wouldn't it be eight foot?
She's, no, the, the, the plate height originally was nine feet, I believe, but there was a, she's saying there's one area that was eight foot six to start with.
Right.
So they just dropped.
We didn't.
Eight foot six.
I'm saying, I'm saying we didn't ask for eight foot six. I don't think that was what we asked for. We asked the second floor plate height to be dropped six inches. So if it was eight foot six, it would be dropped to eight foot. No. And maybe that answers the question of why you don't see it in the, in the rendering. And maybe it's.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I'm sharing my screen right now. Oh, sorry.
What we asked for is not what they did. I don't believe.
Yeah, this is Mike. Let me, I'm comparing the, the previous plan from the February 2nd. I believe there's a roof form change. I'm looking at the entire set from the last time. It was almost nine foot on the second floor for most of it. And I think the roof form, somehow the roof form got, I mean, the, there were some lower and upper roof, I mean, the lower those eight foot six plate and there were some nine foot plate. And I think that they somehow revised the roof form. So you know, I think Commissioner, we all can look at the compare between the roof forms. By comparing the two, the current design from the last previous version.
So on the screen, Commissioner Ma, I have that shared on my screen. So this is the February design plan and on the right side here, the second story, there is this element which is a lower, it appears to be a lower plate height on the right side than the left side. And the current proposal has more of a uniform plate height. What I heard from the applicant is with the left side plate height moving down, it kind of sounds like they maintained a more even plate height. And so didn't get the, perhaps didn't get the relief at the daylight plane then was expected if you, if you said, well, reduce the height by six inches or 12 inches overall. That's what I am seeing now with those plans. But I think the effect was that the taller wall plate heights on the second store was reduced by six inches. And as we discussed last time, or at least put in the agenda report, there was a some, what we would call a de minimis impact as far as the daylight plane. It's, it's a very small impact and it's really insignificant to to, to, to the, to the actual standard. And I would say if, if the commission agrees with a more uniform plate height across here and it makes for a better design, that would be one thing to consider.
Should we, should we have, thanks Steve. Should, should we have the, the design architect, designer or architect to give us more explanation on how she reduced the second floor and which paw was not reduced, which paw was reduced?
It's actually increased by her logic. They, they raised that plate height six inches on the right side on the second floor.
Yeah, so we were previously proposing the nine feet throughout most of the second floor and this was lowered down to eight foot six. And then the second volume, the second, the bathrooms over on the right side were adjusted in order to maintain a consistent plate height throughout the second story in order to have a more consistent and uniform roof line some the front. Does that answer your question?
Not, not really. I'm reading your response in the letter here, point one, your action taken, we have reduced the first and second story.
Can I take a stab at explaining that?
Could I finish first? Yeah, hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner Bishop. So I'm reading your letter. And it clearly says in response to point one, we have reduced the first and second story plate height six inches each. That's not what's been presented by the lady on the call tonight.
Well, I think they reduced it to make it in equivalent height and in some areas it was six and some areas it was zero.
No, what I'm saying is if it was, she said some of it was eight foot six in the last set of drawings. If you reduce it six inches, it becomes eight feet. It doesn't, it doesn't stay at eight foot six.
Yeah, so.
I'm reading the response wrong.
Sorry.
I'm reading your letter. That's all I'm doing. Yes.
Um, so we were previously considering the overall plate height at the second story to be nine feet with a reduced portion at the right side volume. So we, in order to reduce the overall mass and height of the building, we interpreted this to mean a six introduction at the second story, which we did achieve without having to reduce that rear portion. That was how we interpreted the comment.
Well, that's not what your letter said, so I'm just pointing that out to you. Okay. Jude, is your question answered?
How I would interpret it is they raised the plate height on the right side, eight foot six to match the plate height on the left side that they dropped from nine to eight foot six. Is that not correct? To the architect?
Yeah, we are showing eight foot six consistent throughout the second story.
Okay, and the right side was eight feet originally? Is that how it was?
Uh, yeah, we did step it down to eight feet at the right side.
Okay, so that should have been your explanation that you raised the right side to be consistent with the left. Even though it's reduction on the left, it's actually an increase of six inches on the right.
Sorry for confusing on that.
And that's, that's what should have been stated in the letter as well, and it's not.
Okay, we'll take that feedback going forward.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. So after last meeting, I just want to know if there are any communication about the privacy screening between the neighbors, between the rear neighbors and the applicant or the architect.
The main correspondence that occurred was when we reached out to them to see if we could go out to the site and take photos from their yard looking towards ours. And we did chat with them briefly when we did do that, but that was the main correspondence that occurred.
Okay, so there were some communication. Okay. All right. And then based on the photo you showed during your presentation, you know, looking from windows from both sides, from the proposed new house, ground floor, second floor and from the other neighbors. I, I understand that you mentioned those privacy screen show on the photo on the rendering are mature height, mature growth of the tree, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And my concern is that I know that most of people, I mean, right now we plan new privacy screening. It's usually, you know, 24 inch box, 30, 30, 60 inch box or something like that. Are this tree gonna be fast growing and do you know how long it's gonna take to the, to the mature height?
I don't know exactly, but I know the landscape architect is on the call, so maybe he can step in and weigh in on that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be good to know and also for the, you know, everyone to know about the the expected mature growth and how long would that take? Yeah. Okay, that's what I had. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm just gonna kind of piggyback on that. On L1-0, it has the planting ledger and then it talks about, you know, the four new trees installed hot at seven foot eight. And then getting up to maximum of, you know, 18 to 20 feet or whatever. Again, based on their size, if the landscape architect can give a, give us an idea, you know, if they're at eight, say eight feet tall going in, expecting to get to 10 feet in two years, another, you know, kind of what is the growth rate of those to when they should be better blocking, you know, over a six or seven foot tall fence? So if the landscape architect?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Greg Ng. I'm a landscape architect for the project. And I would say that probably water growth in plants and they were somewhere around two feet of growth a year, maybe a foot and a half too. So if we're looking at a So if we're looking at a twenty four, I think I have twenty four inch box three.
You have three at twenty four inch box and one at a twenty five, or twenty five gallon.
Yeah, I have those dated at a certain height. Installed. It probably would take, uh, again, probably about two feet a year. For ideal.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other commissioner, questions commissioners?
Just, just getting back to the neighbor, David. I mean, was the solution shown to the neighbor in advance of this meeting or is the neighbor seeing the solution? At this moment? I'm just kind of curious. I know there's, there's conversation when you, when you went over to a photograph, but did you follow up and present this to them?
Uh, we did not follow up with the owners with this proposed design.
Okay.
Hopefully they'll be online. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close off, mission comments. Steve, do we have any? Public comments on this item?
Um, let me look at. If any member of the public wants to make a comment, you can gesture, raise your hand. Um, or otherwise just unmute yourself and, um, then we can determine how many and allot you time. I don't see any and I don't hear from anybody.
Okay, all right, we'll close public comment. And open up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Ma, would you like to begin?
Sure, um, thank you. Yeah, I, I believe there's some, uh, you know, some improvements. Uh, on the, on the design, uh, you know, they did drop, uh, most of the part. Six inch on the second floor, uh, and on the ground floor. And, um, on the master bathroom side, you know, of course she did not, uh, indicate that i- earlier. Until we found out that, uh, that one was raised to match, so right now it's all consistently eight foot six. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's not perfect, but I think it's there, so for that part, I'm, I'm okay. And, uh, on the other hand, on that privacy screening. I was still a little concerned because the neighbor raised, uh, about that privacy. Uh, screening, uh, and then how the view between the two neighbors last time. But apparently the neighbor did not, uh, show up, I guess that, um. You know, they probably are okay or something, I don't know. So I was hoping that, we were all hoping that the neighbor show or say something. And then the, um. As far as the private screening, I think it's. You know, if the neighbor are not, um, express any more concern, then I think that should be okay. I know that it's not perfect, uh, situation that it, it's gonna take some time to grow the tree. Uh, but there's no other better one, I mean, we, either they can play more tree or bigger tree, but I think that's. Sometimes they might, may not be realistic, so that's all I have, uh, at this time I. I, I am, you know, in favor to approve this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Carrick.
Yeah, well, yeah, uh, I appreciate, uh, the response, the thoroughness of the presentation. I most appreciate the streetscape drawing that was done, it does. It's more telling, it's showing the integration of the, uh, you know, the roof lines, uh, adjacent to the, the neighbor, so. I think, you know, this, this design is hitting the mark of what we look for. Within the design guidelines to integrate a new two-story home in a, in a neighborhood that is absolutely one-story, so. It's well done, um, and it's handsome, attractive. I just think the explanation was a little lacking on the second story plate heights, I'm. Still not clear and it looks like there was some plans and, uh, changed up, so it's confusing when you show two drawings and. They look the same to me, at least on one side, so next time, hopefully we get a better explanation. My main concern remains the neighbor in the rear, um, I'm disappointed to hear that there wasn't any follow-up. Um, with them to show them what was proposed. You know, I think it's gonna be a shock, uh, to them when this does go in and I know there was a lot of effort put into. Modeling tree heights, but you know, that's at maturity, that's not now. And, uh, I think there will be a reaction, uh, to them. And my hope was, you know, there would have been a, at least, uh, you know, here's, here's our drawings, here's our proposal, what do you think? Or, you know, or, or a conversation, not just at, when they went over there to do the photograph. So, um, regardless, I think what they're proposing makes sense and it'll look nice in the future, but. You know, um, my comments are in response to the neighbors' comments, uh, from the initial meeting and. Once again, I'm primarily concerned about their reaction, given that they're not, they're not here at this meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Bishop?
Uh, okay, so I'm gonna echo a little bit of Jude, I guess, uh. I, I'm still confused on what was done. As far as the, uh, the plate heights, what was written specifically in the letter that was provided to us that doesn't really match what took place there. We should do better than that, I think, to the team that prepared. Uh, the rest of it, I think they did listen to us on the other, other three points. And, uh, my concern, biggest concern here would be. This wasn't presented to the neighbor, the neighbor isn't here tonight and on the call. And I would, I would ask the, uh, architect, landscape. Team and, uh, and the owner to work with the neighbor, uh, behind. To see if they can't come up with a planting that will provide good screening for both families, I think there is room for improvement there. Uh, but given, given that, if you could do that offline as part of the, the building process, I think that would make for good neighbors, I highly recommend that. So given all, all four of the points, I'm in favor of moving forward with the project.
Great, thank you. I don't need to reiterate what many of the commissioners had already said, so, uh, I just support the project, I think it's a good. Looking house, I think it fits in, given the, uh, neighborhood and I would support it. That being said, do I have a motion?
I, I'll do, uh, I move, um, to approve, uh, item. Two S C twenty one dash zero two three at nine five nine alto old strike. Per the, uh, conditions and the findings, uh, listed findings and conditions. And, um, adding the one additional conditions to. Doing the, do it before or doing the building permit process to communicate with the real neighbor. To come up with, uh, agree, uh, landscaping privacy screening. Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that with my.
So, so before you, before you vote or motion on that. Um, I guess I have a little bit of concern about how staff would implement that. Condition that Commissioner Ma just recommend, uh, recommended or motion because. If the neighbor, if they don't come to any agreement, I, I don't really know where to go with that, so. That's my only concern as far as implementing that.
Yeah, I think we have a fairly detailed. Landscaping plan and the trees and all that, um, that. Fits in with the neighborhood and fits in with the backyard, it's unfortunate the. Neighbor either bio mission or whatnot, uh, has, is not here. But my personal feeling is how are we going to? Force them to go back, I mean, are we really gonna try to force them to go back and have a conversation with the neighbor? Again, on, you know, the couple of trees that already satisfy. And are a reasonable growth tree that in a year or two, uh, the whole backyard will be relatively strained.
Chair Blockus, I, I have a question for the staff.
Yep, go ahead.
Steve, uh, I, I've, I'm not the, I don't remember the procedure correctly, but this, it's the second meeting on this D R C. Did the city notify the real neighbor or the adjacent neighbor again? And I just want to make sure how, how the neighbor, uh, will be notified on that.
Yeah, with a continued item and it's not date certain, we do the mailing and, um, the property posting gets. Gets revised to tonight's meeting. So those, those two notifications are done, um, for a continued item, that's not date certain.
So the, the, the real neighbor should have got, uh, the notice, okay?
That's correct.
So if they don't show up, uh, yeah, I guess that, uh. You know, we, we can all assume that he did get the notice and. He chose not to show up and express his opinion, I mean, he, if he could not attend this meeting, he could have, uh. Send an email or something to, to this, to the project planner.
I did not, and just to confirm, I did not receive any public correspondence on this item.
So in that case, I mean, uh, I can just revise the. The condition, just, yeah, the motion, um, that we encourage, I just encourage, but not, uh. Uh, require, right?
Well, you would just. A motion would be to approve it at. Subject to the attached findings and conditions and just leave it at that.
Okay, I'll do that again.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve item two S C twenty one dash zero zero two three at nine five nine alto old strike. Per the, uh, listed, uh, conditions and, uh, findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll go have a vote on it then, Commissioner Ma?
I.
Commissioner Carrick?
I.
Commissioner Bishop?
I.
And Commissioner Blockus, I. So four yeas and, uh, one abstaining since he's not here, uh, congratulations, it is passed. Why don't we go ahead and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is S C twenty one dash zero zero four nine. Property located at six twenty three Almond Avenue. And we have a staff report.
Uh, yes. So good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Can you see my shared screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, this is Janyel Associate Corner, before you, I'm presenting a design review application, S C twenty one dash, dash, zero, zero forty nine. For new two-story house at six twenty three Almond Avenue. The project consists of two thousand seven hundred and two square foot floor area of the first story. One thousand five hundred fifty two square foot floor area of the second story and a one thousand nine hundred ninety five square foot basement. A five hundred twelve square foot detached A D U is also included in the project, but it, but it is not, uh, part of our discussion today. The slide provides you the rendering from the proposed house viewing from the Almond Avenue. The subject property is located on Almond Avenue between North Clark Avenue and El Monte Avenue. The subject property also backs up to properties fronting J Street. With regard to the characteristics of the immediate neighborhood, that found in the neighborhood is a diverse culture neighborhood. As defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The homes in the immediate neighborhood context are a combination of one-story and two-story homes. With two-story homes at six twenty and six thirty three, uh, Almond Avenue. A majority of the properties in the neighborhood share similar front setback patterns in addition to six oh seven and six thirty nine Almond Avenue. The immediate neighborhood features low scale wall place that appear to be between eight to nine feet. Except for the properties at six thirty nine Almond Avenue that have multiple wall place ranging from eight feet to fourteen feet in height. Roof forms are a combination of simple and complex roof lines due to, uh, homes renovation in the neighborhood over the years. A mix of roofing materials are found in the neighborhood, including wood shake and composition shingles. Dexterior materials commonly used include wood shingle, stucco and wood siding with stone veneer or brick accents. This slide provides the project site plan, the subject property is, um, sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty four square feet lot area with an extensive lot depth. Of two hundred and fifteen feet. To the left of the slide, it is the overall, uh, site plan, as you can find, the proposed, uh, dwelling will be located in the first half of the lot. And a detached A D U, uh, is proposed in the back with a swimming pool to the left. Due to the extensive lot depth at the right side of the slide, uh, zoom in, site plan that focuses on the main house. The new proposed house is outlined in the bolded black line with the second story cross hashed that appear, uh, to be in gray color. The existing house is provided in a lighter gray, uh, hash line. And as you can see that the volume of the pro- proposed house will be moved slightly forward to the front props line compared to the existing one-story house. The house is found consistent with the R one dash ten zoning district development standards. Including but not limited to setbacks, lot coverage, floor area ratio, height limit and the daylight plan. This is the basement floor plan, including a large recreation room, uh, with a large light well to the left. And one bedroom, one bathroom with a small light well to the right and a bar area. The proposed wet bar, uh, should be noted that, uh, it will be conditioned to be one hundred and ten voting wires. Only to prevent from converting this area into a second kitchen without proper permits in the future. On the first story, there, uh, there are one guest bedroom along with a bathroom. A great room with a kitchen that will be attached with a covered patio, including outdoor barbecue and outdoor setting. And an office room and a dining room located at the two sides of the main entrance. Through a projected porch. The two-car garage will be attached to the house at the right end. On the second story, there are four bedrooms and three full bathrooms. All the bedrooms will be north-south orientation with limited side windows. A small balcony, uh, with four foot in depth will be constructed between the master bedroom and the bedroom number two. That'll be screened by the two rooms at both sides. This slide provides the proposed front elevation, the architecture of the house is, will be changed from one-story traditional range style to a two-story contemporary range style. The front elevation uses design elements to soften the bark and massing of the new facade appearance. Those elements include integrated gable and heat roof forms with a consistent four inch twelve roof pitch. Articulated architecture at both first and second story, horizontal eve line and a five foot and six inch, uh, projecting front porch with stone veneer accents. Regarding the materials, the house will use the stucco as the main exterior finish with horizontal, uh, wood fighting and stone veneer accents. The aluminum clad window frame, sorry, uh, the, the aluminum clad wood frame windows and wood boards will be installed with wood trains. The roof materials will be composition shingles. The proposed house features a plate height of nine feet and six inches for most of the room at the first story. Except for the office and entry porch that will have a plate height of eleven feet and eight inches. At the second floor, there are three plate height proposed. With the eight foot main plate height for most of the rooms. And a seven foot and four inch plate height for the bedroom number four at the right end. And, uh, nine foot and two inch plate height for the master bedroom facing the rear yard. and, uh, nine-foot and two-inch plate height for the master bedroom facing the rear yard. Steph considers the proposed project is sensitive to the scale of the neighborhood and will maintain a similar massing. The project appears to be an appropriate design per the design guidelines in a diverse character neighborhood. On the left side, seven windows are proposed at the second floor, including six small sized windows and a one medium sized window. All the windows will have a window sill height of four feet and eight inches. Plus, the left windows will face the front and the side yards of the neighboring property. There should be no, uh, adverse privacy impact from Steph's perspective. On the right elevation, four windows are proposed at the second floor, including two small sized windows and, uh, two medium sized windows at the master bedroom. The four windows have the same sill height of four feet and six inches along the right elevation. Uh, the privacy impact to the right side neighboring property is found very minimal due to the placed window sill height, uh, which is considered by the design review commissioners as an acceptable practice to minimize the privacy impact. Also, additional evergreen screening vegetation will be planted along the right, um, property line. Along the rear second story elevation, there are four windows proposed, two medium sized, two panel windows and two large sized, three panel windows. The window sill height varies from two feet and two inches to two feet and eight inches. Additionally, a balcony with four feet in depth is proposed between the master bedroom and the bedroom number two. Steph found the privacy invasion from the rear elevation will be minimized. Uh, first, the two-story house is located within the first half of the lot with extensive lot depth, the rear windows and the balcony will be at least one hundred thirty-eight feet away from the rear property line. And second, large existing trees on site will mitigate the privacy invasion along, um, both property lines, side property lines. New screening vegetation will also be planted to fill in the gaps along the, um, side property line as well. This is the proposed landscaping plan. Uh, the plan includes twenty-eight existing trees in the proximity, including four protected trees that spread throughout the site. All the protected trees will be retained and protected during future construction as outlined in the Arbor's report that is provided in, um, attachment, uh, attachment F of the agenda report. Um, uh, nine small trees that are no greater than four inches in diameter will be removed. New shiny silosma trees within the public right of way are also proposed for removal. However, as a condition of approval, the applicant shall contact the public works department for the street tree removal and replacement. Um, additionally, new evergreen screening vegetation will be planted along property lines, including six heavenly bamboo, uh, six tong young and four wax leaf privet along white property line. Three wax leaf privet along the rear property line to the right and four pitosporum and three tong young, um, along the left property line as highlighted on this slide. Uh, new screen vegetation will be planted with a minimum size of fifteen gallons. And at the plant's mature age, the vegetation will reach a height between six feet to twenty feet and a spread of four feet to, uh, ten feet in width. There will be additional trees, shrubs and ground covers planted throughout the site as presented in this, uh, landscaping plan. This is the materials board that, uh, Steph presented, uh, in the front elevation slide. And last, for community outreach, the applicant has installed a billboard on site in late December last year. The owner also engaged the neighbors for the proposed plan. Uh, the proof of such community engagement was provided in attachment E and as you can see, um, at the left, at the right side of this slide. So with all the presented information, staff recommends the design review commission approved design review application SC twenty-one dash zero zero forty-nine, subject to the listed findings. Steph now concludes the, uh, presentation and more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Very, very thorough. Um, Commissioners, uh, any questions for staff?
No.
Michael, any questions?
No, I don't have any question.
Frank?
Uh, no questions at this point. I would say excellent presentation though. Thank you very much.
Yeah, uh, I as well don't have any questions, so we'll go ahead and move to the applicant for their presentation.
And will be the architect or the owner or both?
Yeah, we'll let, um, the owner, RuPaul, speak first.
Okay, and you have a combined total of ten minutes.
We won't use it all.
Hi, everyone. I'm RuPaul Sutari and I'm happy to be here this evening. Um, thank you for looking at the proposal for my home. I am a sixteen-year resident in Los Altos and I certainly wish I had started this project earlier before my kids got too much older. But I have three kids who have enjoyed this, this town and as my husband, I think about our forever home and our forever location. More importantly, Los Altos was it. We've enjoyed every single bit of this town, um, for the last sixteen years and so we thought we'd upgrade right here. I think I have a neighbor here who may want to speak now or later. I'm not sure.
We'll let her.
We'll do that later.
Okay, and, um, I, I think I was going to say that I, I, in the outreach process, I did enjoy talking to many of my neighbors and I learned a lot from them. Um, our architect was learned through actually one of our, my neighbors, he designed both the house across the street or his firm did the house across the street and his, and he himself did the two neighbors to my, to my left. Um, so I'm excited to be part of this process. Steve, I'll give it to you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Steve Cullum of REH Associates Architects. We're the architects and the applicant for the project. I want to thank you for taking your time this evening to review this project and hopefully you'll agree with Ja's staff report and her presentation. This is, this is the second time I've worked with her on projects and she is so thorough that she just takes all of my presentation out. She would have, I, I would have said exactly what she says, so I'd like to just open it up to, to questions.
Okay, um, Commissioners, any question for the architect?
I just have a, sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Go ahead, Jude, go ahead.
Uh, Steve, um, looking at the conditions, they talk about the stone wainscoting that, uh, to wrap from the front of the garage back to the dining room and then around to the fence line. I just want to confirm that your plans show a, a gate on the right side and the intent is to take the stone to that gate, correct?
Correct.
And then the rendering you show on your cover sheet, I can't tell, but it also looks like that wainscoting is wrapping. Is that true? Is it?
It is wrapping, yes.
Yeah. So it, they, you're basically meeting the conditions, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We, we, we don't like to do Hollywood type designs.
Just want to make sure. Thanks.
You got it.
Michael?
Yeah, I just have a, you know, one quick question. Um, the eve condition, um, I'm just curious, on, on top of the garage, second floor, why the eve condition is different from the rest of the house? It looks like a, it's a stucco kind of squared off at the eve.
Oh, at the front?
Yeah.
Because we have, because we have closed soffits? And so that's how we resolve it at the gable end?
Oh, I see. Okay, that's just a gable, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And are you gonna have, uh, I mean, for the rest of typical, typical, uh, eve detail, are you, I'm just curious, are you gonna have an open or closed?
Yeah, it's closed. It's closed.
So they're gonna be all closed?
All closed except for when, um, at the very entry, we didn't, we didn't close it there because it, it didn't make sense with the brick element there.
Okay. Yeah, because you, I see you try to have, uh, some kind of transitional, contemporary or contemporary.
Yes.
Feel.
Yeah, it's a transitional feel, yeah.
Okay, alright. Oh, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Frank, any questions?
Uh, no, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one, that, well, yeah, no, just one. Uh, on the, uh, office, we're at eleven-two, or no, eleven-eight.
Eleven foot eight, yeah.
Yeah, and how did you guys come up with that specifically? Is that somehow tying into roof lines or?
Yes, it's a, it's a resolve, it's a natural resolve to the, uh, nine-foot-six plate on the side. And then as it comes up, rather than trying to step the roof or making kind of an awkward, uh, junction there, we decided to bring that up to that roof and wrap that around. And we actually had the entry element a little taller and, uh, Ja and I and RuPaul decided to lower that down and tie the roof in.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, apologize for the phone call. Any other further questions? Any staff or any of the Commissioners? I see none. We'll go ahead and close that off. Um, do we have any? Uh, well, I know we have one neighbor who would like to speak. Do we have any other comments on this from the public? Steve? Um, again, at this time, if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand or other gesture or if we don't have any of those, you can unmute yourself and speak. Um, I believe you'll have three minutes. Correct. And so I would also say, uh, RuPaul, I think it sounded like you had your neighbor with you or are they on a separate line?
They are, I, I don't, I think he's on a separate line. He's not with me.
Okay.
What's, what's their name?
Chris?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, hey, Chris.
Hey, RuPaul. Yeah, I'm in the call. I'm the neighbor across the street at six twenty-eight Almond. And, uh, I'm on this call mainly just to show support for RuPaul and her family and, uh, their remodel, their project. I think we're really excited about that, about it and excited for them.
Great, thank you. Steve, any, any other public comments? Here we have one.
Yeah.
Hey, Angela.
Hi, I'm, um, also RuPaul's neighbor at six three-three Almond and I'm also basically here just to show support for her project.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other hands? Steve, anyone else? Um, I do not see any other hands. I don't see anybody else unmuting themselves at this time. Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for, um, commission discussion. Um, Frank, do you want to start?
Well, I'd say it's a very nice design. Uh, it's amazing to me how many square feet are in the, in the, uh, uh, project totally, you know, basement, first story, second story and ADU. Uh, it's huge, right? Uh, but the design is good, so it's just amazing to me how Los Altos has grown from small ranches to something of, of this size. That's just, that's just an observation, but, uh, project has my support.
Great, thank you. Jude?
Uh, yeah, similar commentary. Uh, first of all, I visited the site. Uh, I talked to the owner on the ring and I also met their dogs, so just wanted to disclose that. Uh, the project to me is very well designed, uh, so thorough, thorough presentation, uh, very nice landscape plan as well. Uh, so I am in support of the project.
Great, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, the same. I'm in favor of the project. It is amazing that the architect did a very good job. It's a very large house, especially in the second floor with the four bedroom, but, um, you know, it just fitted so well. That's kind of playing into the, the entire design. So, yeah, just like, uh, all other commissions, um, mentioned that, um, everything's good and, uh, I, I like the project, to approve the project. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I, uh, I support the project. I have a little concern with the office with the size of the, uh, sill plate heights. Um, to me, my focus tends to jump to that and that might just be because of the, the wood siding. Um, but all in all, I think the scale fits. Um, it's kind of a little bit unique lot, uh, with the jet back in, because I was wondering, you know, maybe to offset any appearance of mass and bulk to have it sit back, but you really can't. Um, but yeah, overall, I think it's a lovely house, a good design and I, like Commissioner Kirik, did speak with the applicant to get into the property via the phone and, uh, also, uh, ran into the dogs in the backyard. Uh, so I do support the project. Do I have a motion?
Uh, this is Frank. I could try.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Okay, if I move, we approve, uh, project SC twenty-one zero zero four-nine, six twenty-three Almond Avenue, uh, subject to the findings and the conditions in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote. Uh, Frank?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, I as well, so it's four ayes. Congratulations, the project is approved as, uh, reported.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to item four, however, uh, before we do, this is the point where I get to leave the meeting because I have to recuse myself because I live three and a half houses away from, uh, the subject property. So Vice Chair, um, Michael Ma will be taking over and I will be signing up. So have a good evening and we'll talk to you later.
Alright, thank you, Chair Blockus. Thanks, Dave. Alright, let's, uh, move on to item number four for tonight. It's SC twenty-one zero zero four-six for six twenty-eight Questa. Um, uh, can I have the, the presentation from the staff?
Sure, of course. So Commissioners, um, this is Janyel Associate Planner again. Before you, I'm presenting another design review application SC twenty-one dash zero zero forty-six for residential additions to existing two-story house at six twenty-eight Questa Drive. Uh, the project scope consists of interior remodeling, exterior modifications and the residential additions to the existing two-story house. Residential additions include, um, twenty-five square foot rear addition at the first story and a five hundred forty-two square foot second floor addition. Exterior modifications include replacement of exterior siding with fiber cement siding, window adjustments in alignment with the interior remodeling, uh, first story roof form alterations from a shed of flat roof to a four in twelve, uh, pitched roof and replacement of gravel type roofing materials with composition shingles. Two renderings are provided on the slide viewing from the front yard at the, um, uh, the top and the rear view, uh, the bottom of the slide. The subject property is located on Questa Drive between South Springer, Springer Road and Campbell Avenue. The property also backs up to home fronting of Alita Drive. The surrounding neighborhood is considered as a diverse character neighborhood as defined, um, according to the city residential design guideline. And the reason, uh, for this, for this classification is mainly because of the subject house, uh, that is existing two-story residence. Additional properties in the immediate neighborhood are all one-story units and share similar front setback patterns with a low-scale horizontal eve lines between eight to nine feet. All the garages are attached to the existing homes in the front yard facing the street. Uh, simple roof forms with consistent composition shingles roofing material. Simple roof forms with consistent composition shingles roofing material are found in the immediate neighborhood. Lexterial materials commonly used include stucco, wood siding, and bricks with wood trim accents. This slide provides the site plan to the right and the zoning compliance justification to the left. On the site plan, the blue area indicates the second story addition. It should be mentioned that the existing second story portion has a granted variance for a five-foot second story setback reduction. Therefore, the house with a ten-foot second story setback is a legal conforming structure in compliance with the granted variance as well as the current zoning standard. And the additions are consistent with the current zoning development rules respecting the minimum seven feet and six inch second story setback. This is the proposed first floor plan. The minor twenty five square foot addition are highlighted in yellow, including adding two bay windows and a minor addition to square the dining room. On the second story, the addition is to add a master bedroom along with the master bathroom. At the existing second story, one bedroom will be removed and replaced with the living room. On the front elevation, the existing home's plate height will remain the same as eight feet the first story and six feet eleven inches at the second story. The proposed second story addition will have a taller plate height of eight feet and two inches. But the addition does not appear to be emphasized in terms of the bulk and massing. First, the second story addition will have a consistent and integrated roof form with existing second story. Second, the proposed addition will be recessed from the existing portion that has a horizontal eave line to break the massing. Additionally, there will be modifications to the existing windows at both first and second story. Garage door as well as entry doors will be replaced and adjusted. The first story roof form will be changed from shed roof to a four in twelve slope roofing with materials of composition shingles. Compared the existing and proposed front elevation, Steph found the modifications to the existing homes, window, doors, and roofing forms actually present a more proportionate facade that will improve the aesthetics of the front, existing front elevation in general. Along the left side elevation, a two-panel medium-sized window will be added to the addition with a minimum sill height of five feet. Additionally, one window with three-foot sill height at the existing second story will be eliminated. The reduction of existing second window and the increased sill height from Steph's opinion shall result in less privacy intrusion. Along the right elevation, the proposed addition, a two-panel small-sized window will be added to the master bathroom with a minimum sill height of five feet. For the windows at the existing second story portion, one of the windows will be eliminated, and the other two-panel medium-sized window will be relocated to the south with the same window size and same window sill height of three feet. With an extensive setback of about sixty five feet, the relocation of the window should not result in greater privacy impact as well. Along the rear second story elevation, there are three windows proposed. One small-sized window with a sill height of five feet for the bathroom number two at the existing portion of the second story. One medium-sized window with a sill height of five feet and eight inches for the master bedroom closet. And one two-panel large-sized window for the master bedroom with a sill height of two feet and eight inches. Steph considered the privacy impact will be minimal because the setback from the rear props line to the window will be seventy four feet, which is much greater than the required rear setback of twenty five feet. Also, existing screening vegetation and trees along the rear props line will be retained that should mitigate the privacy impact. This is the landscaping plan. This is the existing landscaping plan that the applicant will keep and maintain. So the landscaping plan, including evergreen screening vegetation and trees that from Steph's opinion is sufficient to mitigate the potential privacy issue. Existing evergreen plants include four Japanese cheese food, one cherry laurel, and one Japanese camilla along the rear props line. And one Japanese cheese food is located at the side props line to the left. The screening vegetation has a has a current height between eight feet to eighteen feet and a width of four feet to eighteen feet. This is the proposed materials board. In addition to the presented exterior materials and the roofing, the the modification will have the fiberglass brimmed window with the fiberglass trim. At last, for the community outreach, the applicant has installed a billboard on site in early December. The owner also performed additional community engagement, including emailing and mailing outreach to the immediate neighborhood, the property owners, as you can find the the attachment in the attachment E of the agenda report. At last, Steph recommends the Design Review Commission approved design review application, SC twenty one dash zero zero forty six, subject to realistic finding. With the information, Steph now concludes the presentation and open for questions. Thank you for listening.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ja. Let me see. Are there any questions from the commissioner for the staff?
I had one, Michael.
Go ahead.
So as I look through the plans and then I look through the billboard, the billboard still retains the upper deck. I just want to make sure. Something doesn't look like it's consistent here. Maybe, Ja, could you tell us, is the billboard inaccurate? That's an earlier version. Is that correct?
Sure. Yeah, the billboard is actually was required to be posted after Steph sent the first letter, comment letter, to the applicant. And with the first, with the original plan, there was the upper deck proposed.
Right, right.
However, I believe upon the communication with the neighbor, with the neighbors, the owner removed the upper deck and.
Apparently, there's still one neighbor that's confused, though. So maybe we'll get to hear from them later tonight. So in reality, the the deck will not be there when constructed, correct?
Yeah, the deck is not part of this this project.
Okay, thanks, Ja. That's my only question.
Thank you.
Okay, any more question, Jude?
Yeah, Ja, I curious. There is a roofline element on the front of the building that bisects the first floor and the second floor. And it kind of helps reduce some of the scale and mass of the impact of the box. This applicant has removed that. And I know they're upgrading the elevations. But were there, was there any discussion on how to mitigate some of the impact of this box? That's now could be more boxy than it was previously?
Commissioner Carrick, can you clarify which was, which part do you think was actually increased, was not mitigated? So I'm a little.
Yeah, so there's a there is a trellis element that wraps the garage between the first floor and the second floor on the existing home. And it looks like that has been removed. And now we have a sheer, at least from my reading, we have a two-story vertical wall. All the renderings indicate some kind of like maybe a belly band. I don't know. It's not really clear what's going on there. But I see no break between the first and the second story new elevation. Whereas if you look at the existing house, you could probably get it on Google Streetscape. There is a two-foot projecting element where, right where at the floor line between the two levels. I don't know if you have a Google, Google Street View you could pull up, but it actually helps reduce the impact.
Sure. I, yeah, I will pull the Google Street View map. But I, but I believe the designer is also here today. He probably can answer that question.
Yeah, this is Jenny. I'm the designer. So, yeah.
Now, yeah, hold on, hold on.
Okay, okay.
Let's let's have Ja listen with your job finish. Have you finished?
Yeah, I, to be honest, I was not aware with that trellis element of the existing, of the existing house. So I was not aware that the the removal of that element as well.
So just out of your, in your opinion, I guess this is, I guess I'm just trying to dig in what the discussion was when you you met with the applicant. But the design guidelines go to great lengths to try to reduce the impact of garages facing the street. And, you know, this is an opportunity to take an existing condition and rethink it so it's less impactful. I guess I'm asking is, was there any direction from the staff to explore alternative elevations on that front?
No, I was not aware that element, that belly band or projected, the projection would be removed from this front elevation.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ja. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Let's move on to the applicant or architect designer. You have a ten minutes total for your presentation. Do we have the property owner or the architect, architect or designer here?
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm the good evening everyone. And I'm Yun. I'm the owner of six three Questa Drive. So we bought this home last year, and it's a very old house, which was built in nineteen fifty one and alerted in the nineteen sixties. So roof structure is very old and the original floor plan is not ideal. So we want to upgrade it before we move in to improve our living conditions. We have shared our design with neighbors and had emails with three neighbors on our south side to address the privacy concerns regarding to the balcony on the second floor in our first design. After discussion, we removed the balcony from our design to accommodate them. And laterally, we updated our post with the new rendering without the balcony in 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 front of our house. I think I have sent the updated photo to Ja before. And we do not plan to remove any of existing frames. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Does the designer or the architect would like to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, so to explain the missing, yeah, so this is Jenny, the designer. So it's to explain the machine, missing chalice. So that chalice actually is an extension of the existing flat roof. So when I did remove the flat roof to replace to a slope roof, I accidentally removed those parts. So if there's a requirement to add, to break down the massing, then I will, in my next seminar, I will, or in my building department seminar, I will put it back as an existing condition.
Okay, okay. That's all you have? You would like to say anything else or make other presentation items? Is that all?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, okay. So thank you. Then in that case, I'll open up the question from a commissioner. Who would like to go first or anyone has, any commissioner have question for the designer or the owner? Jude?
Well, yeah, so my question is, you know, this is a, unfortunately, it's a grandfathered-in situation from nineteen sixty four. I read the correspondence, and I'm shocked that they allowed this variance to build the second story on top of a projecting garage. And to me, this is an opportunity to look at how to improve that elevation. And getting back to the roof line, I understand the rationale, but did you look at other alternatives? You you have a little space in front to add to the garage, to maybe change materials or create some kind of element that helps minimize the impact of the garage doors and then reduce some of the verticality of the front. Do you you have any sketches to show possible alternative solutions there?
So do you mean we need to add some more element to break down the massing or is saying to reduce the massing on the second level above the garage? Because we want to minimize the construction cost and just add something invisible at the back. That's our main goal in this design.
Yeah, see, this this element that you, this picture shows that element. It's a brown element there.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It actually works somewhat well with, you know, the existing roof line over the garage. So, you know, well, I'll make my comments.
We.
Can we, Jenny, can we have the, can you hold it until our commissioner finishes his talk?
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jude.
Well, that's it, Michael. I'll make my comments and later.
All right, okay. Thank you. Frank, any questions?
Well, it's not a, it's not a question. It's an observation, and it's going down the same path that Jude's walking down too. The front, it's very vertical in nature and having the garage like that, it looks like boxes on top of boxes, right? That's what this, and if we can help with the design, I would like to think we could, we could do better than what's here. But again, I think probably this is the wrong part of the meeting to get into that. So I'm just going to hold for right now.
Okay, all right.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Frank. For me, I have some question for the designer. Have you feel verify or take a closer look at the existing house? When you, when you draw the existing condition? Because I found that just looking at, I mean, when I was there, I noticed something. But just looking from the plan, Google Street View, the elevation, your elevation is different. Existing elevation is different from the street view. The window, the window shape, the window height, and of course, following Jude's previous comments about that the chalice or extension of the roof, you know, they are different. And then there are some exposed raptors or beams sticking. I mean, this is just one of the area. So I just, and then most importantly, I I see that the your plate height, your you indicate plate height for the existing second floor is six foot eleven. Are you sure about that? Can you clarify all this question?
So the 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 missing part in between the garage and the second level is my mistake. But which windows you hide, did you say, talking about?
The two, the two, by looking at the Google Street View, the two window, above the garage, the second floor window facing the street. The shape are different, you know, it's.
Oh.
The shape are different, where, you know, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, let me double check. If it's different, it's my mistake. Because I'm thinking we are going to change it, then I, maybe I didn't pay much extent, attention to it. The shape, it's a sliding window, right? It's a corner window? Okay, okay.
You show, you show square window on, on either side, but from the street view, it's, it's, it's a long rectangular window.
I, and I need to double check the size, but as I said, I, maybe I made mistake because I'm thinking we will change it anyway. So I didn't pay attention about the, the size. But the steel high, I, I'm pretty sure it's really low. It's a voti ceiling in, in the interior, so you won't feel very, very low in the interior. But actually, it's, it, it is six 11, six foot 11. Is that?
Okay, okay. I, I just, I just, okay, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you, you, it should be verified and put you firm on that. Okay, that's all I have, thank you, thank you. Okay. With this, and so I wanna see, check if anyone from the public would like to speak before we go into discussion between the commissioners. Steve, do you see anyone?
Yeah, so if anybody would like to speak, you can raise your hand or other gesture and then we will take anybody that just unmuted themselves. I saw somebody, but now they disappeared. I see one person so far. Ken, if you'd like to speak, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, I am muted today, so.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so there's been some confusion on the rear deck, I'm gonna go over that again, and the window layout. If you've read my.
Excuse me, can, can you state your, your full name and your address?
Ken Jones, Kenneth Jones, 639 Arbella, we face directly behind the existing structure that we're talking about.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
So if you saw my, to reduce the time, since I have 1100 time to speak, if you read my emails, you would see what my concern was. They were attachments to the agenda. Is that?
Yep.
Everybody can firmly seen that. So the, when this design review committee notice came through, I looked at the plans that was noted there and it showed the deck being there with a sliding door and two large windows. Evidently between that time and now that has been removed, is that correct? That's a question for the designer or whoever.
Yes, it has been removed, our second seminar. So now it's, it's, there's no deck, no balcony on second level anymore.
Yeah, my other comments, I think, I don't know how much time I've got left, but in terms of the foliage and the cover, if you screen or whatever you call it, I'm concerned that, I appreciate the fact that they're doing something, but I'm concerned that still won't provide adequate coverage for us. As, as he said in my letter, from every room in our house, we can see that existing structure before the, before the 500 feet addition is built towards our, our property. So anytime there's a light on up on the second story of the existing building, we see it in every one of our rooms and our, our backyard. That's my comment, I got 50 seconds left. I think Charles Gray is also my neighbor that's on here that hopefully can confirm what I just said. So I'm done, I'm finished, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. To, since the, Ken mentioned there's another neighbor who'd like to speak.
I do see, yeah, I do see Charles Gray with your hand up, if you'd like to speak, you can unmute yourself now.
Okay. Yeah, please state your full name and your address, you have three minutes.
Charles, you, you can speak now, you're unmuted. I don't hear Charles. It looks like he's unmuted, but maybe he's having technical problems. Charles, if you'd like to speak, you're unmuted now. Let me try to mute him and then unmute him and maybe something will.
Okay.
He looks like he's back unmuted, but I don't hear anything. Also, for Charles, if you can hear us, if you have a microphone on the bottom left-hand side, there's a little arrow next to it, you can click on that arrow and maybe switch to a different microphone or different audio device. We're not getting anything from him. He might be trying now, I'd see his microphone just went off. Yeah, his microphone's back on, but I don't hear from him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, now we, now we hear you.
Okay, Charles, go ahead.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
So.
Charles, you, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Oh, I know what to do. Settings. And.
Charles, we can hear you, if you, if you can hear us, you have three minutes.
Sound. And choose your output device, speakers headphones. Hello?
Hello, you have three minutes, we can hear you. Well, I'm not sure we're gonna get.
It's, it's, it's muted, it's muted. Yeah.
Okay, one more chance, Charles, if you can hear us, you have three minutes.
Looks like he's got some, some problem. That's, that's fine, let's, let's move forward, let's move forward.
So, so Michael, this Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think Charles was the fellow that had emailed the piece to us about the balcony and the windows. Can someone look through the paperwork from today? I don't have it right here in front of me and I believe that's what it was in regards to.
The, the email is from Ken, Ken Jones, he, he already spoke.
I wrote, I wrote down on my notes, it was from Charles Gray, so 628 Questa, yeah? Yeah, I don't know, so.
Yes, there, there is that latest correspondence also posted on.
Yeah, it was late correspondence, right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me, but it was in regards to the, from memory, again, it was in regards to the, the deck and I believe the windows, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, I see.
If we can't get a hold of him, that, that's what, that's what his concern was, that's all, okay?
Yeah, and I guess I'd recommend if, if, since he can't speak and wanted to, I don't know how long it is, but you might wanna just read it into the record real quick.
I, I agree, Steve, that's a good idea.
Or if you're just signaling, yeah.
Yeah. Michael, do you?
Sorry, I don't have it open, I don't have it open either, but, Job.
Yeah, I have it open, if you stop sharing your screen, I can pull.
Okay, yeah, that'll be nice, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Please share, so we can all, all see it, everybody can see it, thanks a lot.
I haven't shared, sorry. Can I see the shared comment?
Yeah, do you want me to read that or do we just wanna have it up on the screen? I can read it real quick.
Okay.
Los Altos Design Review Commission, we live at 647 Arbella Drive, the northwest corner of our lot touches the southeast corner of the lease lot. It is surprising to see that the latest, the latest plan submitted by the owner for the remodel and addition for 628 Questa Drive, Los Altos are different from the plan shown now in front of 628 Questa Drive. We were of the impression that the plans for the back south side of the house had been changed from the original based on neighbor input email sent December 9th, 2021. They showed that the deck and the fence on the second story had been removed along the glass entry, along with the glass entry to the deck and the large windows. In parentheses, can be seen on the property at 628 Questa Drive at this time. So are these plans sent by the commission that show the deck, fence, sliding doors and large windows the latest? Is there a misunderstanding? We had hoped that the leave, that the, sorry, pronounced your name right or wrong, the Lees would consider our concerns. In an email dated December 5th, 2021, we communicated to the Lees that we were saddened to imagine a second story with a deck and a side window on their home, which would have a straight line view onto our yard, patio, living room, dining room and family room, thus compromising our privacy. Our yard and patio have been our sanctuary for all these 47 years. The open views through uncovered windows provide a spacious feeling in our compact home. The Lees responded that they were planning to plant a few osmanthus and orange trees to fill in their southeast corner. How many years will it take to reach the wall height of 17 feet, 2 inches, I wonder? Said 10 years for the citrus, there is a large old ivy bush in the corner of our lot now, which may provide privacy till question mark. Do you wanna scroll down a little bit? We were satisfied that the window on the east wall is to code as it fixed and it, and it is fixed and it has frosted glass. An email dated, I would assume that'd be September 22nd, 2021, stated that the deck would be removed and modifications to the windows would be made. If in fact, the design stated in the email of December 9th, 2021, no longer is valid, then we respectfully request the Desiree Commission require the plan to be changed to eliminate deck, glass bedroom door and to reduce number of windows from two to one in a smaller size. We thank the commission for their time, effort and commitment, helping make our Los Altos community a wonderful place to call home sincerely. Marjorie and Charles Gray. And that's the end of it. Sorry for my reading, it was very, the text was really small.
All right, thank you, thank you, Steve. Okay, if there's no one from, no one else from the public, then we're gonna, we're gonna move forward to discussion among Commissioner. I would like to go first.
I don't see anybody else raising their hand, but, and I, if anybody else would like to unmute themselves, now is your chance to speak on this. And I don't see anybody, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you, Steve. Who would like to go first? Frank?
Sure, I think Jude will probably do a better job of this than, than I will, but I'll be just brief. The, the design, I know, it sounds like the, the owners are trying to do this on a budget, which is understood how expensive construction is today. I totally get that. The unfortunate thing is, it's, it's not the most beautiful end of the house with that big vertical, you know, the garage and then the second story right over it. And I think Jude used the, the correct words, there's an opportunity to improve something that wasn't done very well some, some time ago. So I, I would like to see if we could help, maybe, you know, with both of the architects on this call, Jude and Michael, to maybe help with a little bit of design on the front. So it really doesn't look like it's three boxes that are kinda stacked, the third being the, the new piece that they, they wanna build. I mean, I've got some ideas, but you guys have better credentials than I do in this area. And hopefully, there would be budget available by the owner to be able to do something that would be, I think, a lot more aesthetically pleasing from, from the road. So anyway, but those are my thoughts to at least initiate the conversation.
All right, thank you, Frank. Jude?
Well, yeah, so you know what path I'm going down here. So it's like, first of all, I appreciate the attempt to kind of bring this home more current. So, you know, probably needs, it's, it's dated from the 60s. You know, I assume it was built earlier than that, maybe in the, even in the late 40s, because it looks like it's had a few additions over the years. So, but part of our role here and the design commission is when projects come before us, we look at opportunities to improve the overall aesthetics of the project in addition to trying to bring the project in compliance with the design guidelines. And I pulled out the section of the design guidelines, you know, it's basically five points, 5.6 and 7, talks about garage and garage placement and trying to, you know, reduce the impact. And it talks about architectural design elements. So I think there's an opportunity here to, for the designer to re-review, you know, the design guidelines. And without a lot of cost, I think, given what's being done here, you can substantially improve at least the streetscape aesthetics and particularly the impact of the garage and the two-story wall. And, you know, whether it's a material change or a roof line in, you know, addition, I think it could be studied a little bit more. And coupled with that, I, you know, I think it's, once again, is an opportunity to the homeowner to maybe put a little front porch on this home. I mean, right now, it's, for lack of a better word, pretty stark. You walk up to the front door, which is not very substantive. There's a new front door, but it'd be nice to have a little portico there to keep you dry in, in the rain. So I would encourage the designer to study that as part of this re-looking at the, the front elevation and the reducing the impact of the garage as well as the vertical mass of the two-story wall. Once again, it's unfortunate the variance was granted because, yeah, this home in, in today's environment would never be allowed this type of variance. Regarding the neighbors' concern of the rear, you know, I think there's a few inconsistencies in the drawings and the package. And, you know, we've, we've seen a little bit of this and it would be best that everybody has current information. So whatever the applicant can do to the, with the neighbors in back is to share the most current and specifically point out what has changed and what is being presented for them tonight. I don't see a very well-developed landscape plan as part of the package. I see site plans that are fairly hard to read. So I would wanna see some drawings that are clear to what potential landscape screening is being proposed. And per the neighbors' concerns about materials that are gonna grow, I think it's kinda silly to suggest an orange tree, which is very slow growing. I think the applicant needs to look at screening material that's gonna, one, be attractive and blend with the overall scheme, but two, you know, hit the spots with reducing the, the, the light pollution that is gonna spread along the rear property line. You know, in terms of what we typically approve, this house does meet, you know, those guidelines for side-facing windows. You know, the rear facing windows are reasonable, although. You know, the rear facing windows are reasonable, although I, I think they could be reduced a little bit in terms of sill height. I'm not going to make any suggestions there, but it is a large window. So if it could be brought up a little bit and maybe squeezed a little bit, I think that might address some concerns. The other window is a bathroom window and I'm less concerned about that. I would hope they would have shades or blinds or whatnot on those to help reduce light pollution concern. So all in all, I think the rear is going in the right direction. If you couple it with a landscape plan and a conversation as opposed to the last project that, or one of the first projects, I think it would be good that as part of our conditions, we've conditioned that there is a conversation, a presentation and conversation regarding a landscape plan and that the applicant brings that agreement back to us that this has been vetted and reviewed and agreed upon prior to us signing off. That makes our job a little bit easier when the project does come back, that we don't have to push it off on staff to try to enforce something that may or may not have been agreed upon. So those are my comments.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Jude. For me, I agree with Jude and Frank. There's a lot of stuff to be done on this one. I mean, just from the the existing house condition, you know, the, the current drawing has a lot of discrepancy. I, I'm looking at the photo of the street view compared to the joint. So, and I understand this is a remodel, but again, just like what you said, this is an opportunity to improve, you know, the, this project, and there's a lot of opportunity here. You know, to, to do a good job and you know, on this one. I also encourage again, the talking with the rear neighbors about the privacy. So you can, next time I will hoping to see, you know, a site plan or landscaping plan showing a better design, how are you going to protect the, the privacy between the neighbors? And then some of the, into the detail stuff. Let's say, okay, next time I would like to see more details about the eve, the windows, and are you matching the existing window detail? What kind of, you know, window material, what type of windows? All this need to be clearly described and, you know, presented on the drawing. So I guess that's all I have. And from here, who would like to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, Michael, just to.
Okay.
Long. I move that we continue. Item number SC 21-0046. The addition remodel at 628 Questa Drive for the following direction. And I will be open to additions, but one that the applicant re-review section 5.6 of the design guidelines, specifically the discussion of reducing impact and mass towards the street and come up with suggestions of how to do that with roofline, material change, garage door design, all of that. So that's number one. I encourage them to explore a more defined front entry that gives a sense of entry into the home. I would request that we, the applicant provide a full landscape plan, similar to what we saw earlier tonight. A, something that gives sizes at planting and at maturity and a timeframe for maturity. And also documentation of a conversation with the neighbors behind, saying that the plan has been reviewed and vetted and there's agreement on what is being proposed. I would also suggest that the applicant review the rear-facing windows and modify slightly to reduce the impact of light on the neighbors directly behind an Arbeleda.
Okay. Jude, do we want to add something that they should communicate with the neighbor before coming back to next meeting?
Yeah, I think I had that in there. The, there should be some kind of documentation of conversation. Hopefully with an agreement between the neighbors that there has been a plan presented and agreed upon that addresses the neighbors directly behind their concerns, not only about visual, but light impact on, on their privacy.
Okay. Ja, is that, Ja, is that clear to you?
Yes, very clear, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
I think Frank is the, the second here, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll call to vote. Frank?
Hi.
Jude?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Okay. Three to zero. So we're going to continue to, on this project. Have the project come back. All right. So let's continue to, let's see. That's all the project we have tonight. Commissioners report and comments. Anyone have a new items to discuss?
I guess, I guess, do we have a date for the joint meeting? That was being tossed around, has that been scheduled yet?
Yeah, so we just talked about that today. I was got feedback from enough of the commissioners that, and based on staff, other workload and projects, we will hold that on April 6th, a joint meeting. It'll start at six o'clock. Unless, yeah, it'll start at six. We typically would just go, you know, start the regular meeting at seven o'clock. So that really only gives an hour. If there's a recommendation for additional time and we could, we could certainly entertain that. And that would be the, that would be the, the meeting to introduce what the council approved as far as a resolution with regards to the objective design standards for SB nine related projects. And they did provide some feedback with regards to their, I guess they call it kind of phase two, the things that they could not address with a limited time. And those phase two items would be something I think they're looking for the commissions jointly between the Desiree Commission and Planning Commission to help address. And then other things that you feel as commissioners could be addressed better. So I foresee additional meetings. We also have quorum for the 20th, which is the, the second meeting of April. And so I would also pencil that in.
Okay.
And we can determine.
20th is penciled in?
I would, because based on probably, I don't think one discussion is gonna, is really gonna be enough. The, the other meeting, which was discussed or, or on the table was the 7th of, of April, which would have been a planning commission, which would be the next night. So, and there wasn't a quorum for that. I don't think you'd want to meet two nights in a row. And then if there needs to be additional meetings after the 20th, that could be entertained as well. The, the city council did request to come back to them in May. But I think if there was, if there was some good discussion, we could report back to the council that you need additional time.
Okay, all right. Any other question from a commission, commissioner?
Hey, Michael. Michael, let's, yeah, yeah, I had something. So one of the things I noticed at tonight's meeting, when we introduced each project, we didn't go through the ex parte communication that the lawyer had asked me to do when I was the commission in the, in the prior round here. So has that been eliminated or is it just something we missed tonight?
I, I certainly missed it. But I guess I, I think the, from, I, I know that a few months ago, we started that, but it kind of gradually faded away. Sometime it's kind of hit and miss.
I'm not sure we were supposed to do that. It's, it's an observation that somebody should go back and figure it out.
Yeah, I think that is something that either the chair and the liaison, if the chair is not doing it, should remind the chair. Technically Sean Gago says the, is a liaison. He was not available tonight, so I just stepped in. But you're right, Commissioner Bishop, there should be a question from the chair if anybody had ex parte communication and then there should be a response, just for the record.
Steve.
The lawyer, the lawyer had asked us to do, but okay.
You're right.
Get back to that.
Yeah.
My, my question is that, you know, to, I mean, right now, because right now I know almost for every meeting on the agenda, a lot of the applicant asks us to call them before we visit the property. Does that still consider just calling them, hey, can I visit your property? Does that consider ex parte?
No, I mean, it really be talking about the project. If they reached out to you and they wanted to discuss the project, but just saying hello on the street or hey, I'm going to be there at this time is not really ex parte communication.
But we, but I think we still have to bring up every time at the beginning of each item, right?
That would be desired, just so it's on record that nobody had ex parte or if you had what it was and. Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll remember next time. And we'll remind the chair, or help the staff to remind the chair, okay? All right, anything else?
If we're moving on, I can, well, I just kind of told you about the April meetings. I have a lot of screens open on my computer, but I can tell you, let's see. Coming up in March 16th, you will have two, two items, 226 Diadora Drive and 217 Paso Robles Avenue. April 6th. Again, you'll be starting the study session early that night. And I believe there will be at least one project, if not more. We, sorry, we don't have the tentative agenda going out that far. Also, in just as things are sort of changing now with, with, with regards to COVID, there has been some communication from the city manager to the city council with regards to potential meetings being back in person in the future. I'll just say it's kind of, it's kind of out there. And so nothing definite, but there's, there's definitely some some discussion about that going on. And I don't think there, there has been discussion more at the council level and how that would trickle down to the commission and what those requirements might be. I, there's been discussions about hybrid meetings, whether the commission would be required to meet in person, but they would still allow people to call in or have this virtual forum available as well for certain people or, or the public, whoever wants to join that way. That's, I think, being talked about still and nothing official, but just want to let you know that.
Okay. Out of curiosity, do they do the chambers remodel? Does it have all the technology baked in that's going to allow them to do that?
Um, as far as the hybrid meetings, I'm not sure, but that was, that's what initiated the whole remodel process at the beginning was the technology was just getting very old and I think becoming unusable at some point. So that's coming along and is supposed to be completed in a matter of maybe weeks, if not months. I mean, more on the week, week. Yeah, measured in weeks, not months. So that would be something that would have to be kind of tested out. People have talked about hybrid, but how it actually works is another matter.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, how about an update on Marvin? I see it made the town crier, the SB nine project.
You might have read about that in the town crier. There was other publications and also the city, just to report to you, would, I think it might've been reported, maybe not. There was a couple of reporters contacting the city. There's two other projects on Coronado that one of them, this commission saw, 108 Coronado and 120 Coronado.
Right.
Those are side-by-side residences, both are two-story. We're trying to figure out too, whether or not will that staff will bring some projects or these three projects or make them available as examples to help inform what kind of additional guidelines and standards that you would like to see with a, with regards to SB nine. So. Yep.
Do you guys receive a lot of SB nine project lately?
Those are the three, no, those are the three that we've received. I have heard from other, about other cities and as of a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, I want to say, like the city of San Jose had, had not received a single one, which was somewhat surprising, but I think, I think probably the designers and architects and professionals may be a little bit hesitant or didn't really understand at the very end of the year what cities were implementing and then how that would impact design work. And it, you know, as you know, it takes a little bit of time to absorb that stuff. So yeah, we'll see how that plays out in other cities as well. I guess one thing that came up tonight, just wanted to address, we could change our practices in the future based on some of your input. But the issue of the, the billboard sign, currently our direction to applicants is post the sign as soon as possible. I think that was to really ensure that the neighborhood knows about the project coming in. You might recall the previous public notification sign was, was given to the applicant essentially by the city, the 11 by 17, two weeks before. There's a statutory requirement to post it, that the notice be put up at least 10 days. But the current protocol or procedure is that the applicant is supposed to put it up as soon as possible. But I think that results in what you saw tonight, which is if the design changes, then it's no longer consistent. So it leads to a little bit of confusion. I know staff raised that concern internally a little bit. And so some of those signs, they, they, they're not cheap to make a, you know, a weather resistant sign. So every time they, you know, change the design is the expectation that they're going to change the sign again. We haven't really addressed that yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, Steve, I actually also noticed that recently on some of the project too, that, yeah, this one, like what you said, it used to be like right before, you know, 10 days or two weeks before the meeting, then you put up the sign. But right now, I believe the, once the applicant submitted, then. then you put up the sign, but right now, I believe the, once the applicant submitted, then, the first time submitted, and they were asked to put a sign, but sometime they would go through so many rounds, like two, three, two, three rounds, right? A revision with the staff, so, yeah, so that's, I think that's a concern too, yeah.
And I think also with the additional filing requirement that there's this neighborhood outreach, I think the neighbors are more aware of that, and like the neighbors to the rear may never see that sign to begin with, because they don't necessarily drive down that street. So with that said, you know, there might be a, a preference to, to allow staff to give some flexibility and say, well, if, if we think that the there's strong indicators that the plan is not, that the original plan that they submit is not gonna be the one that moves forward to the commission, then delay the posting of the sign. Cause I think it
Curious, Steve, I, I, I think we were the initial direction, we talked about just a larger sign consistent with the planning commission notifications. Is there a requirement at to have an elevation as part, or, you know, a rendering as part of that signage for the planning commission?
Um, I'd have to look at specifically the code requirement, but I want to say that I want to say that the code just says per the, per the standards of the department, and it allows the department to make that decision.
Yeah.
But I think the idea was to, I mean, we've always had the rendering, even with the 11 by 17, to give this idea of what it potentially looks like. So.
Or just, you could also solve it by conceptual, just having a label, conceptual rendering, see www.lasalta.gov, give the link for most current plans on file.
I agree with you, we've also talked about having the, the little, I can't remember what it's called, the little digital
The QR code?
QR, thank you, and then just being able to, you know, take your phone out and not, not having to write down a long one, but that also, just internally, we talked about that, but then, and during COVID, we have been posting the two-story plans on, on our website. But there's just this the amount of effort that it takes to, to make sure that the plans are updated online, and every rendition that we get, you know, not all staff members have access to post stuff online, so it's just kind of a, it's a never-ending organizational conundrum of making sure everything is updated and saving three different digital copies of plans in different places, so.
Yeah.
We're doing our best, but.
Yeah, you do, yeah, and thank you again for what you do, you do a great job tonight, especially in, in Michael, great stepping in for David, so. Anyhow, well-run, well-run meeting tonight.
Alright, thank you everybody, so. Anything else, otherwise, right now it's 9:14, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Goodnight. Bye. Everybody.